Good morning and welcome to October in our commission meeting for October 7th, 2025. Call the meeting to order and note for the record that we do have a full quorum of commissioners present. Just brought one of these, make sure it's on silent mode if you're going to speak today. We do need your name for public record, so please sign up in the back of the room. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on, look for a motion to approve our agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda is our bills that we pay, personnel actions, notices, everything's available in the auditor's office. If anybody would like to see it, it is public record. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on any item on the consent agenda? All right, any commissioners that would like to, any comments on any consent agenda or want to remove anything from the consent agenda? And I'd look for a motion to approve.
Second.
First.
Sorry.
Second.
We got two seconds and a first. Call the roll.
Benega.
Should I vote first or second? Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our regular business, our first agenda item is consider a motion to authorize the commission administrative officer to sign owner change order number three to add a shell space addition to Phase Two of the Juvenile Justice Center project. Morning, Tom.
Good morning, Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer. This is an item that we've talked about several times, primarily in our building committee, but what is before you today is a motion, as the chair mentioned, to authorize me to sign change order number three for the Juvenile Justice Center project. It's going through DocuSign, I'm on the list, so that's why I would be the one to sign it with your authorization. But the key points with this particular change order is that it does add approximately sixty, sixty-six hundred square feet of space to the current Phase Two plan. As you know, and we're excited to mention, that Phase One, which is essentially the detention side of the facility, is ready to be, or will be ready to be occupied by the end of this month. Once that occurs and folks move out of the existing juvenile detention center, once they move out, then that facility will be demolished, and then Phase Two will be built. We identified early in the process, based on some great work by our partners, our contractor, and favorable bids, that there were significant cost savings to our original project cost. With those cost savings, we are recommending that they be put towards, in part, this addition. So this addition will not be finished. It will be built out, but it will not have final finishes done inside, it will not be used as office space, and instead, the intent is to build it now structurally, get the work done, so that when we do need it, and we know we'll need it years down the road, it's there, and then the cost to deal with it will be significantly less further down the road. So the cost today to do that, and what the change order amount is, is $1.6 million. That is similar to the price that you heard several months ago, there is a slight variation just based on the final RFP that came in, but it does bring us to a new contract price of $42.2 million. I do want to emphasize the point here that this will increase the contract time by approximately seventy days, bringing substantial completion to December 11th, 2026. We did anticipate this as we were going into this planning process for the shell space. The other thing that I think is important to point out is that the GMP, although it's increasing to $42.2 million, the GMP, if this is approved, will still be less than the GMP you started out with in December of 2023. So again, we had those cost savings based on favorable bidding in the spring of 2024. The GMP was subsequently reduced. It was amended again a few months ago for underground water retention, and now this, but the key takeaway is that we are still under the original GMP. So with that, I do just want to, I inserted a little graphic here just to show what that space would look like, sort of geographically on the land. It does add that extra square footage to the west of what will be our admin offices and court space. So again, very exciting project, a lot going on this month, but the emphasis here and the focus is on this particular change order. We do have our partners here from Tegra, Henry Carlson, and Arc Inc. If you do have any questions about this, but with that, I will turn it back over to the chair for any questions.
All right, we'll take public comment on this agenda item. Anybody want to address the commission on this agenda item? All right, I'll turn it to the commission for questions, actions, comments.
Mr. Chair, I can just lead off by saying I got a tour of the Phase One yesterday, and Jamie and the team and our contractors did an outstanding job, and I just think this project continues to exceed expectations such that it's leaving us room to do creative things like this change order that will increase the lifespan, increase the quality of our facility, potentially the second courtroom space, or our alliance with the court system, that this isn't just a juvenile detention center, but it's a juvenile justice center, one-stop shop for the criminal justice proceedings and the detention services. So I just would state my support for this, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. How many square feet are we adding?
It's approximately sixty-six hundred.
Sixty-six hundred? Yeah, I just was doing the math. Less than 250 bucks a square foot is a very good price for construction these days. I mean, just looking down the road and having that space available to finish the interior, I think it's a very, is a very, as you said, prudent thing to do, Tom. So appreciate you bringing it forward. Any additional comments?
Just one quick question, Tom. Could you remind me when that space is expected to be used down the road?
The intent of building out the shell space, footings, floor, walls, most of the floor and walls, is to provide that flexibility later on down the road. I couldn't give you a specific date right now, but we do know just based on experience and sort of the trends in juvenile justice and within our own campus, that there will be a need for additional space in the coming decades. So yeah, I can't give you a specific date, but.
Couldn't agree more with you, though.
Call the roll.
Kipley.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign a resolution authorizing the commencement of a civil action. Good morning, Eric.
Good morning, Eric Boggs, State Attorney's Office. I'm here this morning to request the board's authorization to file injunctive action. The resolution, if you've had an opportunity to read it, also allows this office, or our office, to terminate or resolve it at any point after it started without the necessity of coming back here for further action. This is in furtherance of request from the planning office, is determined that the property that you dealt with at the last meeting, in addition to being a nuisance, is being operated outside of the purview of the comprehensive zoning ordinance that we have in place. So this is just a further remedy to try and address those issues. If you have any further questions, I know that Kevin's also here to possibly answer those, and I'd be happy to try as well.
All right, thank you, Eric. Anybody here would like to address the commission on this agenda item? Commission, turn it to you.
Mr. Chair, I guess I just have a clarifying question. Is there any concern with sequencing, in the sense of should we have planning staff try to solve the nuisance issue first and then proceed with this, or do they need to be going concurrently? Is there an advantage to kind of proceeding on both fronts? Can you just give me some thoughts on that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kipley, that's an excellent question, but I don't think in this particular case it matters whether one happens before the other. Ideally, of course, if the property owner voluntarily addresses these issues and avoids the necessity of both having the county abate the nuisance and/or file an action, that would be ideal, but to have both that tracks going at the same time, I don't see as detrimental or advantageous to do one before the other.
Thank you.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Heisey.
Nay.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries for one. Consider a motion to approve the five-year transportation plan and authorize the chair to sign the certification form, certificate, yeah, that form, in accordance with the big fund requirements. Morning, Jenna.
Good morning, Commissioner, I'm Jenna Jarrett, Highway Department. Every year, the state requires us to submit some documents and a five-year plan, transportation and bridge plan, that is commission-approved in order to receive bridge improvement grant funds. So we're just looking for your guys' approval of our five-year plan. We did hold a public meeting a couple weeks ago where we invited the township, and we also advertised it in the newspaper and on our website. We did have seven township members that showed up to the meeting. We went through our five-year plan in detail with them and answered any questions that they would have, that they had on it. Is there any questions from you guys on our five-year plan?
First, before we go to questions from the commission, I'll take public comment on this agenda item. Okay, now I'll turn it to the commission.
Mr. Chair, I guess I can just lead off with, this is always a rolling five-year plan, so four of these years, in some sense, we've contemplated, and now we've added on a new fifth year. Can you just give us the overview of, is there anything new that has changed, or pretty much continuity with the former five-year plan?
Yeah, I mean, there's obviously a few changes every year, based on what we think is a higher need, sooner need than others, and every year, you know, we usually add more bridges that are identified by our bridge inspectors that are something we need to add to the plan because it, you know, it's something, if it's not on the plan, we can't apply for the big funds. So we add those bridges onto the plan in order to make sure we're eligible to apply for the grants for them. It, usually every year, there's small changes, but not too much different from the previous years.
I understand we use a fair amount of state and federal grants for our projects. Do you expect those monies to continue as usual from prior years, or is it going to be much changes with funding and grants?
Yeah, so the big grant is continually funded, there's no end date that we know of for that. Obviously, it gets a little more competitive every year with how much more expensive projects are becoming, so less money is awarded to each person just because of the cost of the projects go up, but we don't see that funding ending anytime soon for us.
Excellent, thank you.
I would just like to make a comment about the fact that I believe that last year was one of the better years that we've had at the Highway Department with big funding, so to speak, in that grant process, and that was because of the Highway Department's exceptional work in making that happen, so thank you for doing that, and we appreciate the additional I'd make a motion to approve the transportation plan for the next five years.
Second.
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Benega.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign an amended joint powers agreement between Minnella County and the city of Sioux Falls for legal research at the Sulan Downtown Public Library. Tom.
All right, Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer. So this, as you noted from the title, you may recall that we approved, that the commission approved an agreement on September 23rd, our last meeting. Coincidentally, I did learn shortly thereafter that Dakota Disc is no longer in service and used. So to clean up the agreement before it goes to the city, which will be tonight, we, I decided that we would amend it out, of course, if there are any changes in the future in terms of additional products, then we would come back to the commission and incorporate those. But I do want to emphasize that this is basically the relocation of the law library from the existing courthouse right now to the public library for public access. Talked about how that can be accessed at the last meeting, no changes to that, but a key point here is that it just removes Dakota Disc, so I would encourage your approval of this amendment.
Okay, public comment on this agenda item. Minor correction. Commission.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Kipley.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, moving on, consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between Minnella County and the city of Sioux Falls to convey real property as part of the city's Minnesota Avenue Improvements Project. Tom Greco.
All right, Tom Greco, again, Commission Administrative Officer. This again is another project that's been discussed several times, primarily in the building committee. I do want to point out that we have representatives from the city and HGR here, if you do have any specific questions about what I'm about to brief. So there are two agreements that I'll brief this morning, I'm just obviously focusing here on this first one, which is the conveyance of some real property. This includes an H lot at the southeast corner of Sixth and Minnesota, right out here, which you've been briefed on previously, and also a series of H lots on the northeast corner of Sixth and Minnesota, up towards, basically north, to the end of our administration parking lot. I do want to point out that this is a change from what you were briefed on at the building committee two months ago, or last month. We did identify an omission that was made several years ago that should have included what amounts to the sidewalks along that right-turn lane right outside of our, right outside of our parking lot here, should have been included in the right-of-way. The county concurs with that, and so I would again recommend that you approve this agreement to convey that real property.
All right, public comment on this agenda item. Okay, commission.
Mr. Chair, I just had one question. We've been talking about this for a while, but could you, or I'm curious what the definition of H lot is. We use the term in the agreement, but I was thinking it over, and I don't know why we call it an H lot.
Well, I'm sure I could describe it, but we have some experts here, and maybe Wes or Randy can speak to it.
Maybe Jacob could help. We got a good engineers over here, too, so.
Good morning, Andy Berg, City Engineers, Sioux Falls. H lot is basically just a highway lot. It is a strip of land, in a lot of cases, or a corner. In this case, we've got a little bit of both, but it's basically a lot being conveyed for the use of the highway adjacent to it, so.
Thank you.
So it's not shaped like an H or any.
And we try not to.
You like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between Minnella County and the city of Sioux Falls for temporary construction easements as part of the city's Minnesota Avenue Improvement Project. Tom.
All right, Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer, again. So here we have a, an agreement to authorize some temporary construction easements for the same project, Minnesota Avenue project. This, there are no changes from what you've been briefed on previously, so this provides for easements along the corridor that will be improved. Specifically for us, it means the parking lot to the south of us here, our employee parking lot, up through the safe home area and all of the adjacent county-owned property along that corridor. A couple of things I do just want to highlight from the agreement, in addition to the temporary construction agreements, it also will provide for the closure, or the permanent closure of two access points on our employee parking lot, I lot, which again is at the southeast corner of Sixth and Minnesota. Those two access points are not, have not been in use for several years, they've been chained off, so this is a good opportunity to clean that area up. And also, one of the, the one access point that will remain on Minnesota Avenue into that project, into that parking lot, will be realigned so that it aligns with the existing parking lane. There are some, there will be landscaping along certain areas of the easement, but generally, the city, when they conduct this project, will put things back the way they found them, or really have no impact on a lot of our existing space out there. So with that, I would turn it over to any questions and to the commission.
All right, again, anybody from the public like to comment on this agenda item? Commission.
Tom, if I might, could you remind us of the timeframe, when this lot's supposed to be, or when this process is supposed to be completed?
I would defer maybe to Andy, City Engineer.
Plan is to bid this shortly after the first of the year. With the 2026 construction time period, there may be some things that go into '27 based on punch list items, that type of thing, but the anticipation is 2026 construction.
Thank you.
Additional comments? Motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Heisey.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to declare various juvenile detention center property as surplus and to authorize disposition as noted on the memorandum dated October 3rd, 2025. Tom.
All right, Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer. So we talked a little bit earlier about the Juvenile Justice Center. This particular action is related to the existing juvenile detention center and some of the equipment that's associated with it, to include the building itself. So one of the necessary things that the commission will need to do is surplus if they choose to, the property listed on this particular memorandum. And so I am going to go through each one of these just to describe what the surplus action would be and why we need it. So first item would be the Juvenile Detention Center in and of itself. Again, that facility, the original portions of it were built in 1969. This action, if approved, would surplus that and authorize demolition of the facility, which is scheduled for next month. The next item is the Juvenile Detention Center parking lot. So there is a parking lot rebuild about seven years ago. At the time, we did not anticipate having, we did not anticipate the construction of the new Juvenile Justice Center project. So that investment was made, and at this point, however, once we do the demolition of the facility, site work will require that that existing parking lot be demolished as well. So those actions would take them off of our capital assets list. And one thing I did want to clarify, and Commissioner Karski had asked me the question just about the cost over here, the current book value, so this is just based on depreciation. I do want to point out that for the JDC parking lot, it's a typographical error on my part, that number should be $70,000, or approximately $70,000. I had put the original purchase price in there. So just moving on down, movable filing system, that's been in the facility since 1997, had a useful life of about 20 years, that we're recommending for demolition or junking. The next item is an IDS telephone system, has not been used in several years, but is still on the books and still at the Juvenile Detention Center. That was originally acquired back in 1996, and has far exceeded its useful life. The generator, we're recommending that it be transferred to, transferred to highway as an asset. This is something that Mark Rins, the facility director, identified as something that can be saved. It has exceeded its useful life on paper, but it is still usable. As I understand, it was previously at one of our other facilities before it got moved over to the Juvenile Detention Center. Next item here is some, a small amount of JDC office furniture. The intent here would be to transfer it to emergency management, so there is still value to that particular furniture. And then the last two items here, first is the JDC control system. So kind of staying, following up on what I mentioned before, these current book values, other than the error that was made, the typographical error up here, all of these book values that remain down here are through the end of 2024, so when they were last entered onto the asset list. So we just did some additional calculation, and the current book value of the JDC control system is about $40,000. We are recommending, however, that that be demolished, junked as well. The control system does, no longer, as of this year, receives additional, or technical support from the vendor. The other important component to it is that the control system is integrated throughout the entire building, from the control room down to the individual locks on the doors. So the salvaging of that would be impractical, and just based on the support of it, improbable that we can sell. And then the next item here is the Juvenile Detention Center camera system. This consists of cameras themselves and a server. This, the original purchase price here was $66,000. Recalculating the depreciation through the end of this year brings it down to about $16,000. This, too, is an item that we are recommending be demolished with the building for essentially the same reasons that I mentioned for the JDC control system. We will, however, go through and salvage a handful of the cameras, because we do use some of them, the same model in other facilities throughout the campus, and we would use them as needed. But generally, that entire system will have been, will reach its useful life in about a year and a half, two years, so we're recommending that that be authorized for demolition as well. Subject to your questions, that's all I have.
Right, public comment on this item. Commission, turn it to you.
I'd make a motion to declare the various JDC property as surplus and authorize the disposition as noted.
Second.
Call the roll.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to opportunity for public comment on any non-agenda item, if anybody from the public would like to address the commission, you have five minutes. Mr. Colby, welcome. You can't take five minutes to get there.
Getting old, stuff is getting old. I, you know, when you come back here and you kind of look and a few memories come back, and you'll say, one of the memories was that forty or so years ago, the city used to borrow money from the county to make its budget at the end of the budget year. Doesn't happen anymore. I think this is the fourth or fifth location that the county commission has met, so commissioners, good morning, counselor, good morning. Looking at all of you, the first time I came here was as a visitor from the Historical Society, and the commissioners were older, the counselor was younger, and the administrative assistant had a different color hair. A negative thing is, I don't remember, you all may remember, the Light Flight used to meet out at the Fairgrounds, and they did an annual, what, an annual contract, and finally the county said, hey, we need to have something that's long-term, so they were going for five years, and they agreed to, okay, we'll sign a contract on Friday, and that Thursday, they announced they had a five-year contract with Wild Water West, after we had cut down a lot of trees and done a lot of arrangements to make accommodations for them. Why I'm here is I was doing some digging and found some things last Friday, and I hoped to get here earlier, but things happen, and I was going to ask if you still have this image framed somewhere in the courthouse. If you don't, I'd like to know where it was, because I remember I gave one, and I happen to have a second one, and the history on it was that Mike Shermer. And the history on it was that Mike Shermer, when he was a county commissioner, not the city mayor, county commissioner, made arrangements with and had Stuart Bringsplenty do the artwork, and they painted on the wall in one of the commission meeting, this kind of a room in the commission on the wall, and they just sprayed on the wall, they didn't paint on canvas. Well, then, when the commission decided to move to a different location, what to do with the painting? So one of the print shops here in town came up, did photos, did offset printing of this, and there were, I don't know how many of these were produced, but they had them for sale at the time, and I bought a couple, and so that's the background of it. And so I had one that I gave to the county commission, you know, to either display here or put in their little office, whatever, and I didn't have time this morning, I got waylaid, but I thought I would ask if you still have that, and if you don't, what happened to it? We do have it. Okay. Now, I thought if you do have it, then you might enjoy knowing a little bit about why you have it and what, how it came about. Everybody knows Mike Shermer, but you probably don't know that he was a bareback rider for the circus, because he was originally from Baraboo, Wisconsin, and that was one of his background items. And some of you may or may not have had the pleasure of knowing Stuart Bringsplenty, who, at the best, you could say, was one of Sioux Falls' characters, and believe it at that. And Mr. Bennega and I have a common tie, because we suffered from a similar malady a long time ago. Anyhow, have a good day, enjoy life, and carry on.
Thank you, Mr. Colby. All right, any other public comment? Moving on then to commission liaison reports. Any liaison reports?
I can lead off, Mr. Chair. Working with State's Attorney Hager, and he sent us a guest today, so I'm going to call out somebody in the audience here, Kylie Van Egnum. You can wave to the audience, we won't make you come up front, but Kylie is one of the, one of three alternative pathway students in the State's Attorney's Office, and this alternative pathway coming from USD School of Law is a program where we provide practical training for students in exchange for a commitment to public service. So Kylie won't get the joy of taking the bar exam next summer, but she'll be a third year student and be working with the State's Attorney's Office, prosecuting cases, civil work, probably a wide variety of experience, and the idea is that, given that experience, the state bar will deem her licensed member of the South Dakota Bar through that experiential learning program. And so while you won't get the, that, that experience of the bar exam, and maybe you'll take it in a different state. I'm kind of interested, this is a pilot program for some of these students, I know we've got a couple in the public defender's office as well, but I think it helps, speaking just from the county perspective, I think it really helps us to know we have a workforce pipeline. And now, while Kylie doesn't have the obligation to work in this State's Attorney's Office, she does have an obligation of some public service, and so knowing that we have a handful of students coming from USD Law each year that are committed to that, I think, is a great thing. And I don't know if Kylie drew the short straw, but she was, she's the first one to come attend a meeting, so next time I talk to Dean Fulton down in Vermillion, I'll make sure you get some extra credit here for attending, and so just welcome and thanks for part of your experiential learning being a, seeing a county commission meeting. So thanks for your work.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to pass on an update and a thanks to Nathan and Brittany, our community supervision team from the Juvenile Justice Center. I had the opportunity to observe them in action recently, and I just wanted to report back that we are doing an excellent work out in the community. Jamie Gravitt and Lisa Behrens have a great team that work with youth in an effort to provide supervision and also to reduce costs, thinking budgetarily. So thank you to Jamie and to Lisa and Nathan and Brittany. It was a really great experience, and if you have any questions and want to know any more about the work we're doing, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. I wasn't at it, I think Commissioner Blainberg was at the last elected officials' meeting. It was almost two weeks ago where we had Tracy Smith, our public defender, give a presentation. I understand it went very well, and it's great that we can educate other elected officials on some of the functions of county government, the public defender's office specifically. I think there's a great misunderstanding in, you know, maybe what happens, and I heard Tracy did a very good job.
She did an excellent job, and Commissioner Heisey was there also. Yeah, wonderful, and the PowerPoint is available, if you would like that, I can pass it on. She did a great job.
Sounds good. Any other liaison reports?
Commissioner, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that the county commission is looking for public feedback on our facilities and master planning as part of our whole planning process. We'd ask anyone who's familiar with our facilities, fill out a short survey, and that can be accessed through our county's homepage, and it also can be scanned and used from this table tent, I guess I would call it. So we're looking for as much public feedback as we possibly can get to make sure that the master plan has everybody's input, and that we plan for this program to meet our needs for the next 30 years. It's a short survey, and all the data that we gather and information that we have for those facilities is extremely important to us to finalize, and we appreciate everyone's support. So if you see this or go to the homepage, please fill that out.
Mr. Chair, I'm glad you brought up that Commissioner Bennega, because if you didn't, I was going to. Excuse me. I just wanted to note that I was able to attend the event at the Mary Jo Arboreum, and it was interesting to find out that the county actually owns a large section of that property, and learning about that relationship that they have with the city of Sioux Falls. Also excited about the Juvenile Justice Center tour. All of us commissioners are going to be looking at the ongoing process this week and next week, so I'll be doing that tomorrow afternoon. That's about it.
All right. Moving on to non-action commission discussion, I'll kick it off, I have one item. A couple of weeks ago, I'd made the comment that the public defender's advisory board is looking for a member, a non-legal type, to serve on that board. It's only a few meetings a year, but very essential to applying the state statute and also helping, or assisting the public defender in the management, I guess, of the office. We also have, are looking for applicants for other boards, the museum board of directors, our planning commission, which meets once a month, does a lot of heavy lifting for the commission, the housing and redevelopment commission, which primarily is involved with safe home. So we do have numerous openings that we do really look to the public to support and assist the county. They are not high-paying jobs, but they are very rewarding jobs, and it's a great way to find out what's going on. So if you're interested in serving on one of these boards, ask any commissioner, call the administrative office, or visit boards.minhahacounty.gov for more information and applications. So we really encourage public participation and involvement in county government, so thank you. Any other non-action commission discussion? Do we have an exec session? Oh, wow, okay. Look for a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.